Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this regular board meeting of the New Britain Board of Education to order. It's November 4th, time is 6:05 PM. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Escobales, would you please lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation of God and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards, roll call, please.
President Joseph Distra?
Here.
Vice President Barbara Moreno?
Here.
Secretary Diana Reyes?
Here.
Anthony Kane with the C?
Yo.
Mr. Salvador Escobales?
Here.
Anthony Kane with the K?
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker?
Here.
Ms. Jean Pina?
Here.
Mr. Jose Rivera?
He's on his way.
And Ms. Tina Santana?
Right here.
Thank you. And now, brief moment of meditation. Thank you. Moving on to item E, public participation. I do not have anyone on my written list. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board this evening? Anyone in the audience that would like to address the board? Anyone in the audience? All right. Seeing no other public participation, we can move on to reports, starting with the superintendent's report.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, board members. Happy to be with you tonight. As usual, part of my report is in front of you. As I've said, I've stopped calling this a newsletter, and I believe it deserves to be called a magazine, the beautiful November edition of District Dispatch. Just take you through a couple of the highlights, as always, lots of wonderful pictures of our kids and teachers at work. Really nice collaboration featured here between our high school students and smaller students. That article called "Building Bridges," wonderful example of our educators' rising club. Really, really nice podcast episode that'll be released very soon. Had the pleasure of talking with two of our parent educators from the key program at Gaffney School. Wonderful things to say about their work. And as always, many, many wonderful examples of the things that are happening across our school district. If you haven't been reading it, for those of you in the public, I very, very strongly encourage that you do. It's wonderful to be reminded of the excellent and really heartwarming things that are happening across our district. I wanted to say thank you to the board and thank you to the community members who came out to our community forum last week to discuss matters of school security. I'd like to say thank you to the Board of Education for the work you put in into setting up some strategic priorities for yourselves and for the district. Those documents can sometimes be dismissed of, "Oh, it's just a mission statement," or "It's just a piece of paper." But I really do feel like the, I believe, 20 bullet points, or perhaps 21, because I think we added one, will really serve our work together between the board and superintendent. It is something that I'm already reviewing and considering as I begin to prepare my budget presentation for you. That'll happen in January. And of course, I want to say congratulations to our fall athletes, some of whom have wrapped up their season, and some of whom still have their season underway. It's been a pleasure. I've gotten to a couple of football games, and the volleyball senior night was also wonderful. So with that, I know we have a long agenda, Mr. President. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, starting with policy.
Yes, we met. There are a couple of policies in here to be reviewed. Some of them, some are regulars of the proposals to take a look at. We have pretty much crossed off the mandated ones.
We've made good progress.
Or a couple that I know others are working on. Pulaski's is working on as far as a couple other items, but we have pretty much taken care of the mandated stuff, and then now working on the rest of the list. I spoke with Dr. Gasper about updating our master audit list so we can check them all off, so that we're a little more accounting of it. So.
Thank you. Curriculum's next.
Curriculum was easy. We only had really one item. It was bicycling. Well, the curriculum and the associated bicycling program that's going to be happening over at Lincoln. I think those of us that were here to hear it, we all agreed it was long overdue, and we were really excited about it. You know, one of the things that really stuck out is how inclusive it's going to be, so we're looking forward to, you know, that sort of making its way into the district, and also, you know, a really good, strong push for it coming out strong over at Lincoln.
Thank you. Personnel.
We met, and we had a very small agenda. We have two items on our agenda for tonight, and that's a new position and an MOE.
Thank you. And finance facilities.
And we had a long agenda that night. We had a lot of contracts we had assigned, purchase orders. We were able to, a lot of them on consent. There's a few there we had to put on the new business, but most of them are on consent tonight. You can come over. As well, we went through the final report in detail.
Great, thank you. Moving on to board reports. Any board members like to share anything?
Sure. I just wanted to say that I thought that the committee forum went really, really well, and I hopefully, you know, would like to see some more of those in the future. I thought we had some great participation from the community. Thank you to Joey and Joan for joining me. We met with Manos Uvidas, a community group organization that meets at South Church. We just talked about how the board event works, how City Council works, answered questions that they had, talked a little bit about some concerns that they had, and told them, kind of guided them on who they could speak to to address their concerns. And also, this past Friday's, the football alumni game was so much fun. It was great. I thought they just did a really excellent job.
Thank you.
Community-wide, I just wanted to give kudos to downtown and everybody just having a wonderful time for Halloween. Because between giving out candy and taking my kids around and them connecting with teachers that they've had in the past in our district, it was just, it was a lot more fun than I thought we were going to. And we actually had two full waves of kids picking up candy. So celebrate the kids that while, yes, they wanted to give their dentists a run for their money, they were just, it was so great, the dancers downtown. So we ended up having a lot more fun than I thought we were going to have, and even just around even trick-or-treating, one. Two is, super big celebration before I go posting about this on Facebook. I'm just going to point out Alderman Award II graduate into Britton School District, right over here, Jarrell Hargraves, who is featured in this beautiful magazine. And then also, this is Tony's son, in case anybody wants to know who he is right over here. Same face as Mora. Okay? The drum major, just letting you know. Don't tell anybody I told you, but here you go. So I love celebrating kids, and sure enough, he goes to hell, he plays music, it's just unbelievable. So I am just happy to see that. So, the other thing too, last and final, I appreciate everybody that came out for our safety forum. I can just say, please, in the future, let's make sure that we have that kind of a show up, show out, and everybody come together. It shouldn't be just about a safety forum. It should just be celebrating our staff, our students, our schools, our community. Please, for Peter, Paul, and Mary, let's make sure that we have that kind of a turnout next time. Again, not just about safety. We should be celebrating them every day. And last and final, I am so happy for Ms. Whitehead. But okay, we'll do that later on in the agenda. Thank you. All right.
Oh, I was going to say, celebration Hispanic Heritage Month at the high school, last, several of us were there. Assistant Superintendent was there, Superintendent was there. You know, shout out to Carlos Villarini, Luz Vasquez, that whole crew over there, Hector Carillo. You know, that thing just looks like a lot. It's just a lot. So, and there was a lot to eat, and there was a lot. So, you know, just good to see the kids getting involved, and you know, each of the different sort of dances and the clothing, and you know, it was just, you know, it's always good to see that. And I know the work that they put into that thing every year. Also, like Larry Graves and some folks that were retired that come back and help and stuff like that. So it's always good, you know. Those people, you know, definitely got their hearts in the right place when they do that, so I wanted to shout them out as well.
I just want to say God bless all of you that had to deal with the kids after the Halloween. Because I can't imagine, I left downtown at seven o'clock and it was still rocking, so I'm sure they weren't in bed early.
They were dancing in the middle of the street! It was fun!
Well, they didn't go home after. They came out to the neighborhood.
They did. No, they didn't, yes.
They were out until nine alive.
It was insane.
No, I just want to say thank you to the parents as well, other board members that were with the forum. That was the support that I was hoping we got. We could have had a little more parents, but that was enough to see that they were engaged, even through the survey as well. The engagement with the survey was great compared to the last night. So thank you all for showing up.
There is a parent engagement event with Brooks Lane and S.E. coming up.
It's correctness on our social media.
Yes. And I would encourage all parents to get involved and attend. And they're going to feed you.
That's it. Hay comida.
Anyone else? Okay, we've moved on to student representatives.
So we just have a couple topics that have recently, like, brought up to us. The main one being the new and still the headphone policy. We believe that limiting student access to devices such as headphones limits the student's freedom of choice and ultimately sets them up to have everything be, like, set up for them. We believe that restricting, like, headphones completely isn't the exact correct approach when taking, having this policy, because you're instilling a mindset to the students of them having, like, to want it more and to instead have, like, a sneaky mentality with it by, like, hiding under their hair, like, covering it with their hands. We believe the solution for this is to have the rule only applied to, like, active classroom sessions, or have teachers or advisors set this up depending on their lessons, because headphones are actually used in some cases for lessons. If we, students watch, like, videos to help them in, like, math classes or science classes, and each student is on their, like, individual pace. But in other settings, we believe, like, crowded hallways, or like, the lunchroom or study halls, I think they're kind of necessary, because it could be very, like, anxiety-triggering seeing how many people are there. Sometimes music, it just calms you down and gives you that kind of mental, like, distraction and relaxation as you're just trying to get that, like, seven-minute break while walking to your class. And I do agree, maybe you should take them off when you're trying to listen, and that's something that the teacher's going to keep instilling. And we also just want to bring up that we understand that students with 504 plans, some of them are exempt because of their specific needs, but maybe not all staff members know who these students are, so they could be singled out. And that brings more, like, unwanted attention and anxiety to that student all the time if they're having to say, like, "Oh, I have this plan," and maybe they don't want everybody to know. And then we also understand that another topic why this policy got set up was because a lot of devices were getting lost or stolen by property, but each student should know and be responsible for their own personal possessions. And they should, like, to their own discretion, bring them to school, because they should be responsible for them, like, they should be in the real world. And it's kind of setting them up to be responsible and not have everything told for them, because we believe, like, in lower levels, not at lower levels of education, but the lower grades, like, pre-K to eighth grade, those rules should be instilled, like, because you're a child in this case. When you get to high school, that's when you are learning independence and responsibility, so you should know that there is a time and a place for those things, and you should be listening. Because at a job setting, you shouldn't have those, so it's kind of like you're learning that. And then there's also been a petition going around the high school with right now over 700 signatures from students demanding a change for this policy as of last week, and this just shows the magnitude of the pushback that's received from this new policy. So we just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah. And in addition to what she said, Student Council is currently working on having some students speak at this meeting to give their reasons on why they believe that the headphone restrictions doesn't really benefit students at New Britain High School. So another issue that's been surprising is the durags man or, like, head coverings. Students have come up to me and they've been like, "Oh, why aren't we allowed to wear durags in classes?" Because, and they've cited the board policy statement, the 5132.10 school attire, and it says that head coverings of any kind, including but not limited to scarves, bandanas, curler, masks, visors, kerchiefs, athletic sweatbands, hats, caps, earmuffs, or hoods, there is nothing said about durags, or bonnets, or cultural headwear. And additionally, it also says that, however, approved coverings worn as part of a student's religious belief shall not be prohibited under this policy. And students have used, like, the fact that wearing durags and wearing bonnets is more so a cultural thing, so why shouldn't it be allowed for students to wear at New Britain High School? They've also cited the Crown Act, which, just for a bit of context, is means creating a respectful and open world for natural hair. And this act was instituted last, like, 2021, I believe, and it protects people of color specifically from being discriminated against based on their hair texture and hairstyle. And students see this ban or this prohibition as more so discrimination, because they're not able to protect their hairstyle while they are at school. They've cited multiple reasons why. First one, hair care. Durags keep curly and textured hair from frizzed or getting damaged, and most students wear them just to protect their hair. Cultural pride for many students of color, wearing durag is more so a way of embracing their culture and, like, where they're from and protecting who they are. Yeah, so this board policy statement is kind of, I don't know, it just says nothing about durags, and students see, "Oh, why is it being instituted at New Britain High School when the board policy statement says nothing about durags?" That's kind of the general summary related to that.
Are they in the school handbook, the durags? Do they mention it in the school handbook?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
I have to say, I kind of agree with the first thing about the headphones. I mean, as a teacher, headphones has been, along with self, has been a terrible invasion of class. However, durags, I have a lot of my students, I agree, it's part of their culture, and I would say, if I were to tell my students, "You can't wear durags anymore," I would be having tons of students and parents claiming to be offended by that. I think, I am in complete agreement with the students on this one. So, you know, I want to tell, it's, again, it's yours, it's administrative policy for you guys, but I think that I kind of agree with the students on the durag policy. The headphones, I'm in complete agreement, they should go. The durags, though, I'm in agreement with the students on this one.
Just want to remind the board not discussing the policy.
I know, I know.
It'll be at the next meeting.
But I'm actually in the policy chair sitting right next to her, you know? And I'm sure she's interested.
She'll be happy to take it up.
I'll be happy to take it under advisement, absolutely.
Yes.
I also want to commend the students at the high school with your advocacy efforts. I'm not sure what action the board will take, if any, but organizing and advocacy efforts, it shows you're doing the work.
Exactly right, we have super presidencies. So thank you for that.
Those ladies are going to law school.
Yeah. You sure you're not going into law, huh?
She is.
Oh, that's why she went and got the policies and the regulations. Very good.
That's something, I think they did a wonderful job both of them. Present next month as well. Come back.
Anything further, or?
I think that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
The month is young.
Okay, now we can move on to item three, executive session. Item A, can I have a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of a worker's compensation matter with attorney Eric Bartlett, Dr. Sanders, and Dr. Gasper?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we are now out of executive session, just a motion for another executive session.
Motion to go back in executive session.
Possible public action to follow for the purposes of discussing the Pulaski Middle School principalship and the director of adult education. Executive session would be with the full board, Ms. Heather Whitehead, Ms. Gina Eller, Mr. Tyrone Richardson, Dr. Sanders, and Dr. Gasper.
I think Tina wants to move.
Oh, I'm saying, I said it. You said so moved.
I moved, but I think Tina wants to, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we are.
Wait, what? Did she throw away? No, she's right around. Chill. How'd you let her off like that? She's holding. It was your bad shooting. Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to let her go.
Okay, we are now out of executive session. We have a motion to appoint Heather Whitehead as principal of Pulaski Middle School.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, New Britain. Thank you for the support that every last one of you has given me in this transition. I love you. I love you. Ciao. Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity. I look forward to what we're going to do in our future.
Thank you. All right. Next up, can I have a motion to appoint Gina Eller as director of adult education?
I moved. Welcome. Second, please. Second, for the record, we have a second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
I just want to say I'm so excited to be here. I'm very grateful and thankful for this opportunity, and I can't wait to see what we do with adult ed. It's going to be very exciting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome to your board. Very happy to have you on the team.
All right. We can move on to new business now, starting with a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on October 7th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Item B, can I have a motion on the personnel transactions report?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I was just going to say something about, you know, I don't normally try to speak on folks, but, you know, Wilfredo or Freddie is already over at, you know, Pulaski. Speaking of, you know, Pulaski moving forward, Freddie's been there for a long time. Good guy.
Listen, he went to school with me, so it was not.
He's a good guy, I know that. Why don't you start crying again, Diana? You know, just his contribu-- I'm saying, all the other folks, like John Larken, I asked more John Larken, but, you know, Freddie sticks out because he was, he came up through the system, was a student. I know the family, you know, they come from good stock, so to speak. And man, that, if you want to talk about somebody who's really garnered some really good, close, you know, personal relationships with kids and families, man, Freddie, you know, those guys, I'm aware of everything that went over there, so.
John Larken, too, was something.
Larken's a good guy, too.
Basketball kind that everyone called by staff there. He kind of ran that school.
So, just, you know, glad that they're, you know, moving on to do something. Maybe they want to pursue a little more, but definitely put in the time, you know, families and kids over there, so.
Okay. All those in favor, can we have a say in aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Item D, can I have a motion to approve board policy 6115.2 Ceremonies and Observations?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I think it was a very thorough discussion at the committee level on this, and the board has before a redlined version of the suggested changes that came out of that conversation.
Any questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Item D, can I have a motion to approve board policy 6148, Caspa completion.
Second.
Can I just make a total sidebar note, which I know is not going to impact the actual writing effort, but just kind of, like, let's be mindful when we're writing policy, is that I ended up having, and it wasn't like a negative back and forth, but it was really, people know what I look like when I'm confused. And I was confused on my side of the computer, and I'm pretty sure the staff number was on their end, too. I understand that my eldest boy is never going to be able to do a FASA, attend a college, not because he's in palliative care, but really because he doesn't have that level of understanding. He's probably early, he's like a four-year-old. The reality is that when you're getting notice about FASA night, you feel almost guilty when you know that your child is not going to be able to participate. If there's any way to be able to tease us out from that communication that really makes it, just in the way that it's written, it makes you feel like you're a nothing parent when your child cannot actually participate in that, because they put so much stock in it. I'm just asking, in kindness and fairness going forward, if there's any way to tease that out for the students that we know that are going to be, but that's already walking in the throes of understanding.
So I would say that's something we would definitely honor at the individual parent level. I would never want to make a statement that says that a school employee should have to guess whether or not a child and/or their parents aspire to go to post-secondary education. But should any parent, yourself included, Ms. Santana, make such a request, I know that the school will do their best to honor it.
This is your fourth making that request, because this isn't the first time that the FASA discussion has come up, but it's just come up to the point where it's like, "Wait a minute, can you please just remove my email?" I don't even know how to put a message. But if there's any other parent that feels that way, just please ask them to contact their school, you know, their people. What their team is, contact their team and let their team know. And I'm just saying, it's just based on the way that the communication is written to all of those parents. That's it.
Anything else? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve a new position request for compliance specialist?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This was discussed thoroughly at the personnel committee. A new position as a district, we are sometimes just above, sometimes just below 20% students with special needs, which equates to somewhere in the region of 2,000 IDPs to manage and DCTs to document. So this is a recommendation that came forward to me from the pupil services department. This is really about compliance. There is a new computer system statewide called CT-SENS. There is a new computer system statewide called CT Sense, which has had a troubled launch. This person will help us come into better compliance with that. And also, there's also um financial implications here. So properly written and properly documented, um IDP has financial implications for things such as excess cost if a student is outplaced and/or Medicaid reimbursement if applicable. So um it's a new position, but it is one that I support per the recommendation from the People's Services Department.
So, and I heard you the first time when we went through it and I appreciate the time that you took to actually explain on behalf of People's Services that you want this position and definitely advocating for the position. Where I have a challenge is as a spec ed parent, and I see everything that they do and I see everything that they don't do because there is a big deficit. I don't see that we actually advocate for our district with special education at the state level. We don't say, hey, listen, the system is not working for us. We say, no, we're going to spend the money that we should be spending on staff and we're gonna spend it on creating another job. I have a problem with that. And I'm just, and it's not, I have a problem with any one person, no, it's a system that was created to supposedly work better and be smarter and help the staff. It's not actually doing that.
I can assure you fervently that Mr. Spalding and I have mentioned that to our respective representatives.
As I have since before the program came out.
At the, at the state level. As I constantly do, I very strongly recommend to the board to advocate through your association CAVE to stand up and defend the rights of local boards of education when they attempt to do these statewide mandates. It's not just that the finance last week, it's not just a brand Hartford, I've heard of a student from Hartford, I've talked to administrators when I was getting my own 92 from East Hartford, Willamette, East Adam, all complaining about that system. So it's not just a local thing, they're all complaining about that system. It's been a nightmare. I do want to say in full transparency though, this position is not just about the software. With or without the software, I believe this, this position is well advised. The software definitely complicates the matter though.
And I think really if the people that you have in the position are actually partnering with the families that they should be calling, then it would help the system work better and be able to help us with parents, you know, as parents being able to advocate for our school district, not just board of education members. You have 2,500 students that are special needs, that have IDPs and 504s and have PPTs. Nothing against you personally, nothing against Mr. Spalding, nothing against anybody here. But it's a system that I remember even calling and speaking to the head of special education at the state level and saying, hey, listen, I don't understand how you're okay with implementing this whole system and we haven't even worked out the case. Yes, it is a problem, but I, I'm pretty sure that creating another position is not the answer. And that's just, that's just me. And I apologize if it took too much time, that's just my own position because I have to use this. Six times a year minimum, I have meetings, PPT meetings at the schools. So I have to communicate with our in-school people. Having another boss, an overseer to the overseer is not the answer.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve a MLU between CSDMB and Local 871, New Burton Federation Teachers regarding ER4 and the teaching of an additional class at NBHS?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We pass this through Personnel Committee and put it on the agenda here just in case anyone had a question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
I'm gonna abstain from this one.
One abstention. Motion passes. Thank you. Item H, motion to appoint a board self-evaluation committee.
Motion.
Second.
Um, Mr. Tony Kane with a C, um had an idea that we shouldn't be doing, we should have been doing for years and years, is to have a self-evaluation committee um for us as a board. Mr. Kane, can you?
Yes, actually, um, it's actually recommended for the practice and those things information that Dr. Gasper sent me from CAVE, it's recommended that we do this in July, that we set our goals and self-evaluate ourselves from the previous year and then we also do it again in January, how we're doing so far, and then again in June, how we did. Well, it's a little late. I talked with our previous president about doing this and it never got done, so looking to have this done again. All it takes is a vote on this board to start the process again. I figure we could at least get a process of evaluating how we feel ourselves have done. And maybe we could look what happens in goal set of things we'd like to accomplish this next year. And then back in June or July, we could then get together again and see how we did and meet those goals we've set for ourselves. I envision I can create a survey based on CAVE recommended goals. I can get it out to you by the end of this week. You can get to, you guys can survey yourselves, write yourselves how you've done according to CAVE standards, CAVE standards. Um, then we could, the committee, now we can get together again, they could meet, discuss, go over how you agree with the ratings as a group. We can then set our goals for the year and then we get together again in June, how well we've met those goals.
So I'm gonna appoint Mr. Kane as the, this committee chair. Does anyone else want to be part of this committee?
Sure.
So you have Miss Santana, Miss Moreno, Miss Reyes, and I'll sort out the committee too, so we have three, four, five. Perfect. And anything else?
Now I say I'll have a survey out for you guys, all the board members by the end of the week, and then I'll report, first results, I'll send out to the committee members so we can look forward and tie up the next steps and leave you there.
Perfect, okay. Also, all those in favor of this committee and the members in it?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Just make sure though, when you get to the committee surveys, you complete them. Guess out.
I'll go first one, first one to handle. And by the way, I heard, what I just heard is, goal-setting meeting, mid-year, end of the year evaluation. I wonder where I heard that. I'm already, I'm already nervous now, this one. Got enough of those at the job board.
Okay, so the committee is established. Moving on to item I, a motion to adopt more strategic priorities for 2024 through 2029. I, again, um, well, first time actually thanking everyone for their work on this. It was a long time coming and um I'm just so pleased that we got it done federally with the number. And um we spent a lot of, a lot of time working on it and a lot of good conversation was had. And I think this is, is not only a statement, but um a guiding document for us to use for the years to come. So I want to thank everyone here, I'm not sure if Dr. Gasper wants to add.
Well, as I mentioned in the superintendent's report, I'm, I'm thankful for this document as well. I am a big fan of such documents being very short and concise and that's, that's what this one is. And I think it's sufficiently specific while also sufficiently flexible to deal with the variety of schools and programs we have across the district.
Can we publish this on the website?
Yes, we can.
This is supposed to be a policy. I think one of the first policies in the book that we held off pretty when you had it.
It's a policy that we should have one? I don't, I don't, I don't believe that document itself becomes a policy, but you should have a policy.
Correct. They had in the men, the book that you gave us, that was the, one of the first things.
Right, have, have a guiding that, so it's one more we can check off the list.
That's why, that's why I'm mentioning it, because I'm checking off lists, yes. Yes. Awesome.
Great, any other thoughts?
Can I just make, um, just to point out, this coming, not this weekend, next weekend, we're gonna be at the CAVE conference. You meet a whole bunch of happy people, um, where we make decisions and give guidance and give feedback. Um, and also it gives us an opportunity to celebrate our district and the amazing people that work in it and show up and show out. And Dr. Gasper will be there with bells on, maybe some whistles, not sure, but hey. He'll be ready. So we're gonna be at the CAVE and he belongs to CAPS, we belong to CAVE conference. Keep us in prayer because we end up having a good time, but we really learn a lot from each other and other towns in bringing some of that fun and exciting expertise back. But we, we try, um, so please just think of us kindly. Next weekend, we will all be there.
I just want to say more, and that's my biggest critique about last year's conference is more venue oriented.
Is this not listed in your priorities?
Oh my God, sorry, I was going on for the next week. She didn't pack it because we had that discussion with me.
The last remark I have is, I'd just like to publicly thank Mr. Dave Irwin, who facilitated the process with both the board and the superintendent. Mr. Irwin has a, a unique skill set, having been both a superintendent, superintendent of the year, but and also a board member. So I, I enjoy working with Mr. Irwin quite a bit and, and I'm glad that the board does as well.
And I think he likes working with us too.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, he's so.
I thought he said that, yeah. All right, anything else?
And he goes at the conference too.
All those in favor of adopting the strategic priorities?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. All right. Moving on to consent, is there anything anyone would like to pull off consent tonight?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor of passing the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, consent passes. Any other business? Motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.